All right. Good evening and welcome to the school board meeting for independent school district number eight, three, four. Today's date is May 24th, 2018 at six o'clock. And Barb, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Board Chair Lehman.
Here.
Vice Chair Pelletier.
Here.
Treasurer Pearson.
Here.
Director Lockland.
Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stivlin.
Here.
You have quorum.
Great, thank you. Could we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. District mission. Jen, if you could read our district mission.
Absolutely. The mission of Stillwater area public schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much. And Director Stivlin, could you read our school board goals?
The Stillwater area public school board of education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. We invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and enhance learning for our students.
I think that's it.
That's it.
Yep. Thank you very much. Could I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Pontrelli.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. We had many causes for celebration over the past few days, and I'll share just a few brief remarks. I know that many of our board members were at some of these functions also. So as our students share some of the things that they're doing to wind down the year, we have lots of things happening. First of all, we attended the retirement dinner for our teachers, and we had a great turnout. We have over 558 hour, not hours, years of experience moving through our doors, which is a wonderful thing for those people retiring and looking forward to the next chapter of their life, but a sad thing for us as a district because they're just such a talented group of folks. And so it was really a fun evening to listen to the stories from their colleagues and leaders who work with them about the great accomplishments that they've had while they've been here in Stillwater schools. I was also able to attend the scholarship award ceremony on Monday night. We gave, our benefactors, I should say, gave over 100 scholarships to our students totaling in over $700,000 to help support our students in their post-secondary endeavors. And so we'd like to thank the benefactors, of course, for their genuine, continuous support. And then also our high school staff, especially our counselors did an amazing job arranging everything. There's lots of details, and they did a marvelous job. We also, in addition to those, have some students who received the 916 Education Foundation scholarships. And those students are Elizabeth Sears, Dylan Haley, and Lauren Gazo, and we're just excited for them. Many of you know and have heard Director Patachak share a lot about our partnership with 916, so we're grateful for those scholarships for our students. And then finally, coming up a week from Friday, we are excited to be attending the distinguished alumni dinner. And this year, we have four recipients. Ms. Maureen Hooley-Bausch of class of 1972, Ms. Tracy Gallois, class of 1979, Ms. Pamela Ogrin-Johnson, class of 1976, Mr. David Rat, captain of the U.S. Navy, class of 1980. And that'll be next Friday at Lake Elmo Event Center. So lots of exciting things going on in our community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next are the interdepartmentary items, and I'll turn it over to Annabelle for our first student report.
My name is Annabelle Gregg, and I'm excited and a little emotional to be sharing my final school board report. Unfortunately, Ava Yocanovich cannot be here as she's competing in one of her final track meets, but I'll be updating you on both activities and academics at Stillwater. Starting with activities, tonight's a big night. The girls lacrosse team is playing brack while the girls golf team has their conference tournament at Oak Glen. The synchronized swimming team is competing in the state tournament at the U of M Aquatic Center. Also tonight, the girls and boys track teams have their conference final meets tonight at East Ridge. Both teams have section prelims on Tuesdays and section finals on Thursdays next week. Those meets will be held in Stillwater at Pony Stadium this year. Athletes who hit qualifying times and perform well during those meets will move on to the state meet in June. The mountain biking, soccer, tennis, and football teams have already had meetings for the 2018-2019 school year. We wish them all the success that the 17-18 teams had. Last week, gold medal winner Jessie Diggins visited Stillwater area high school during a pep fest. She spoke about her time as a Stillwater student and inspired many students who are in similar positions as she once was. The concerto concert last Sunday was a major success. Solists Maria Lander, Morgan Heinecke, Maya Yocanovich, and Bennett Shantz performed incredibly well while being accompanied by the orchestra. The concert also served as the final performance of the school year for the Stillwater Concert Orchestra. The choir has the pops concert tonight at 5:30 and 8:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. And this week, seniors have been picking up their caps and gowns for graduation. They'll rehearse the ceremony next Friday morning at 10:30 as they will be graduating on Saturday at Roy Wilkins Auditorium. In the meantime, they have five days left of their high school career. These days consist of final exams, projects, and inevitable reflection on their time at high school. Much like the senior class will be going many different directions after graduation, Ava and I will be as well. No longer will we fill the enormous seats that sit behind the desk at City Hall on Thursdays, but we'll be exploring new avenues on different sides of the country. It's with excitement that I announce that Ava will be attending Wellesley College all the way in Massachusetts, and I'll be staying closer to home at McAllister College. It's been an honor and privilege to serve our time on the school board for the 2017-2018 school year. It can be assured that the new representatives will share their beliefs and be a continuous representation of the student body at Stillwater. Before I go my separate way, I would like to share some lessons that I have learned from my time on the board. The first and most important lesson that I have learned is the necessity to listen and not just to hear, to empathize with our peers, those that share differing opinions, those who do not understand your background or your work, and those who do not even listen to you. I've witnessed many of open forums. In the five minutes that each speaker is allowed, they are gifted a silent room and a microphone. Their words are not filtered or reviewed prior. They stand before the board with concerns, hope, anger, appreciation, and a slew of other emotions that at some point may be made some board members cry. If we would refuse to listen and merely let their words flow with no action or intent, then this would be simply useless. The act of action will change the world. Thank you for teaching me the power of listening and the importance for empathy even when their convictions may not mirror mine. As a student in the community, it can feel easy to find yourself bogged down in a sea of adults, adult ideas, adult demands, adult opinions, adults, adults, adults. However, my position on the board has mobilized a sense of power within me and has helped me realize the significance of local government. No longer is a complaint or a concern halted at the doors of S A H S, but they can be brought to the community and shared at school board meetings. My excitement for voting has been maximized as I have formed relations with those who represent me on this board and in other elected bodies. I think it's a major asset to this school that the senior classes required to complete and engaging in local government project. Not only will they see the faces who vote for decisions that directly impact them, but they will understand the process of meetings, the topics that are being discussed, and the grassroots effort for change that are made at every meeting. I can't even articulate how appreciative Ava and I are to have had this opportunity. Our newfound knowledge will indeed be applied to the lives we decide to lead in the future. I applaud your dedication to giving the student voice a chance, and I believe any meetings or decisions made with this board in the future without a young person's opinion is not a valid choice. So I encourage you to keep students at the table, even if their opinions are inconvenient, impure impossible, or go against yours. You are all helping to create a generation of inquisitive, articulate, and passionate advocates, and by including them in all coming discussions, true change and development will aid and heal District eight, three, four, and maybe even the world. Thank you. So now I would like to introduce your representatives for next year, Nikhil and Abdul.
And I'm going to ask you to stay once they're done because I would like to present you with a certificate from the board. Welcome. Why don't you tell us your names and...
My name is Abdulaziz Mohammed.
And I'm Nikhil Kumaran.
Well, anyone questions for our new board members before they get started? We don't want to chase them off, but...
I told them we'd ask really hard questions, but can you both just tell us a little bit about yourselves? What are your interests? What do you like to do?
So when it comes to interests, I, although I'm also president of, co-president of Student Council, I also am one of the presidents for Biza Club, which works to fight against child labor and human trafficking that goes on in Nigeria. I also am a part of the Stillwater Concert Orchestra, and I play both soccer and track. And I am a member of the Stillwater Speech and Debate Team. And for future aspirations, I hope for post-secondary, I go to an Ivy League or Stanford in itself, or maybe even stay close to home and go to University of Minnesota or UW-Madison as well. I plan to study neuroscience and then go into medicine and become a neurosurgeon. That is all about me, and I'm turning it over to Nikhil Kumaran.
All right. We both do pretty similar things. I also do play soccer, speech and debate team. Something else, concert orchestra, also doing concert choir next year, something new I'm trying out. One thing that I'm interested in doing is communications degree or possibly a law degree also coming from that. I'm interested in politics. I like talking about them. I don't know. People like talking about them with me, but yeah, I'm hoping to go either to the U of M, maybe Iowa, University of Iowa, or University of Nebraska.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I want to...
I just want to do a plug for A Sky U Ma, University of Minnesota, you both said it. And I've known you kids a long time. We are so excited to have you here, and we look forward to a wonderful year next year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Pelletier.
Oh, one more thing. I'm a Boy Scout.
Annabelle, come on over. You know, having a student, a student board member is unique. Not a lot of school districts do that. Ever since I've been on the board, we have, and I agree with you 100%. It brings an important perspective for me and I think for the rest of the board. We've always enjoyed the conversation that we have, and we've always enjoyed the input that we get, and I think these two gentlemen will follow well in your stead. So the board wanted to recognize both you and Ava, and so I have this certificate, and I want to read it, and I'll hand it to you. Presented to Student Board of Education Representative Annabelle Gregg for your participation and dedicated service to the community as a student representative to the Stillwater Board of Education, 2017-2018, signed by me, Tom Lehman, School Board Chair, and Superintendent Denise Pontrelli. So congratulations. Thank you. Best of luck.
Mom wants a picture.
Chair Lehman.
This is practice for due second.
Yeah, that's right.
The next is the district recognition, and we have the instructional coaches. So I'll turn it over to Rachel Larson.
Good evening, Board Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board. I'm really excited to be here tonight to highlight the work of our instructional coaches throughout the district. So with that, I would like to welcome up Julie Thol, Andrea Schuler, Deb Van Kly, and Annie Johnson. And the rest of the coaches this evening have their parent hats on. Tracy Cox's son is at a tennis banquet. Jackie Collins' child qualified for track, so they're all wearing their parent hats tonight but wish they could be here. So would like to share who the other coaches are. Not in attendance tonight also is Erin Danielson, Val Corman, Wendy Schultz, Lisa Blake, Jessica Johnson, Jen Marty, and Margaret Kirkwald. And in front of you tonight, you do have a brochure that teachers receive on instructional coaching, but more importantly, you know, when people move from the classroom into positions of leadership, it's to support the caretakers. It's usually because they see the value in how other people uplift the people closest to the kiddos. And so when we think about the instructional coaches, they truly are the caretakers closest to the teachers to make sure that the teachers have the skills and supports and strategies they need to reach each and every kiddo that they have the pleasure of serving in their classroom on a daily basis. And something I want to highlight, Jen Marty and Deb Van Kly were here two weeks ago sharing some of the Q-Cop results, but something that wasn't shared specifically that I think is really powerful are the five top areas that our staff identified they were directly impacted by through the influence of a coach. And here are the top five areas. Supporting PLC collaboration, reflective practice and improvement, data analysis, professional goal setting, and professional development and implementing district initiatives, so responsive classroom developmental designs. So when you think about that, that's pretty powerful that our teachers are saying those are the biggest five supports they receive from the leaders in front of you and those names that I read earlier. They do tremendous work to take care of the caretakers who are closest to our kiddos every day. And I would like to welcome Andrea Schuler to share a few insights through her experience as a coach in the district.
Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board, thanks for this opportunity this evening. What a gift coaching is. On behalf of all of my coaching colleagues, I can say that we recognize the gift that we have of walking alongside our teachers and our students in this learning journey. Let me highlight three aspects of this gift for you. First, relationship matters. James Comer says, "No significant learning can occur without significant relationship." This is true for students. This is true for adults, too. Coaching is a key way that adults can be in relationship while they ponder, learn, struggle, experiment, and reflect on ways to help all our students learn. Second, we all want to tell our story. Although educators are surrounded by people all day, every day, it can be a lonely profession. After four years as a coach, I see how much my colleagues just want to share their stories of daily triumphs and frustrations as they work with their learners. Simply listening without judgment can be one of the greatest gifts educators receive from coaching. Finally, say thank you. To highlight the impact of coaching, I could rattle off statistics about the 120 probationary teachers and 138 tenured teachers in year one of their evaluation cycle that we've worked with across our sites this year, or I can list the 661 coaching interactions I've logged at the high school so far this year. However, the real impact of coaching comes in quieter ways, often with a thank you. I cannot begin to tell you how often I am thanked for simply doing my job as I sit with colleagues who need support in reflecting on their goals, who want to talk through a new instructional strategy, or who want another perspective on how to have a challenging conversation with a student. I have never felt so appreciated. Another gift of this job is seeing all the wonderful interactions staff have around the building with their students and their colleagues. As I've worked to more intentionally thank my colleagues for the good work I see them doing, I am getting thank yous for the thank you notes I send all the time. We all crave this simple acknowledgement of the heart and soul we pour into this work. Coaching is one way to acknowledge, support, and thank our educators for their work. So thank you for this opportunity this evening to tell our story. Our educators do good work, and we are so proud to partner with them in this learning journey.
So Annie Johnson is at Stonebridge Elementary School. Deb Van Kly works throughout the district, Andrea Schuler at the high school, and Julie Thol supports early childhood.
Well, thank you very much. We can't say it enough either. I don't know if anyone on the board has any questions or comments.
I'll comment.
Director Hepner?
I watched this week when the legislature was trying to play around with the 2% staff development as a way to try to get some money, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, I think. And so I, one of the things I thought about were the instructional coaches, and I found an article by Jim Knight, who's apparently a guru, and he says, "Although there are many reasons why instructional coaches are important, I believe there are three main reasons. Focus on best practices. Teachers need help understanding what'll give them the biggest bang for their buck." So thanks for getting us that. Connect with, connect colleagues with one another, and I think Andrea talked about that a little bit, that teachers get stuck in their classrooms sometimes. And then the last one's providing an important and fresh outside perspective. So thank you for providing that perspective to teachers who I think need it day after day after day. So thanks for your work.
Great. Thank you very much, and enjoy the summer, so... Barb, is there speakers for open forum?
No speakers this evening.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I am aware of items F and G. Director Stivlin would like to discuss those, so we will poll those, but again, for the public, all items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school board and will be enacted by one motion and an affirmative vote by a majority of the board members present. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate subject of discussion by the board. On tonight's consent agenda, we have the minutes of May 10th, 2018, school board meeting, the accept gifts and donations, April 2018, the disbursements register, May 3rd through 17, 2018, the treasurer's report, April 2018, the human resource personnel report, district-wide flooring replacement, and the model plan for lead-in to the school drinking water. Those last two items will be polled for a separate discussion. So with that, could I have a motion to approve on the consent agenda items A through E?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Opposed? All right. The one item that we polled was the district-wide flooring replacement, and I'll turn it over to Director Stivlin.
Yeah, hi. So I just had a couple of questions about this. Being that I am still relatively new here, I don't really know how the long-term facilities maintenance process works. So one of my questions was, this is funding for replacing flooring materials in four of our buildings, and I just kind of wanted to know a little bit more about how that works and who decides that. And I know we had approved a long list of things last year that was sort of like a 10-year plan or a five-year plan or something, and it just was never clear. That had a lot of things on it. I don't know how those things are picked and how do we prioritize. So that was one of my questions.
All right. Do you want to, you want to go individually? And I, because I could turn it over. We did get an email from Superintendent Pontrelli, but maybe for the public, Denise, you could kind of talk about each one of those questions, and then we'll just go from there.
Sure. No, that's fine. And Tony Wiltshire is here, too, if I need more specific details. So the long-term facilities plan is something that we approve, and basically, it's a list of projects that happen throughout the district. And one of the reasons that the legislature moved towards us doing this is many schools were putting off some of the facilities and maintenance projects that needed to happen. And so they really wanted schools to be thoughtful about how they might keep up with, just like your home, there are maintenance things that need to happen, and if you put it off too long, then you have buildings that are really in tough shape. And so the plan is a good estimate of what might need to happen the next 10 years. When you look at that, though, there are always things that end up changing. For instance, you might be planning on repairing a roof, and you might have three weeks of rain and not be able to do that. Or you might be planning to tie a parking lot and end up having a track meet or something else during that time. So sometimes those projects get changed to other times because of things happening within the school district. When that happens, then we need to look at what might replace it and when might we do it at a later date. So it's really just a rough calendar of projects that happen. How we determine what happens depends on the age. For instance, one of the things that you're looking at with the flooring, the flooring that's being replaced are buildings that have carpet that's about 20 years old. And so when they go through, they'll visit, Tony Wiltshire will visit with the principal and talk about the use, and does it still need to be carpeted? Should it be some other type of flooring? And then they move ahead with the work after a discussion about what the needs are.
Cool. And so then my other question relating to this was that the architect for some of these kinds of projects tends to be, I've noticed just over the past year or so, tends to be BWBR. And just kind of curious to know how that's decided and whether or not the architect needs to go through a bidding process as well. When we choose an architect, does that go through a similar process, or, you know, how does that work?
Yes, we actually are going to be in the process of getting some bids for architectural work. For instance, if we look at doing a bid for, or doing an addition for Brookview or other larger projects, the reason we chose BWBR for right now is that they've already done the work in the buildings and had a lot of specs and plans. We wanted this work to be done this summer, so to be able to do that, we remained with them. But that is something that I think I've shared, we've already started the request for proposals from different architects if we should move forward with an addition for Brookview. So it's not, it's really a process that we can go through each year.
Okay. Cool. Did you have a question?
I was going to make sure that Director Stivlin was done first before, but if...
I think she, she answered the, yeah. I'm finished.
Okay.
One question. Capital. Director Hepner, the legislative... One of, or two of those are dead, at least in two of those. And add up is this. Quarter dollar. And the other one, maintenance.
I think that comes down to the, when you, if you remember the list of buckets where we have the general fund, and then we have other funds that you can't move between. And we'll be spending time on that on the 29th, but that's where it's difficult because you can't always move from place to place. Even the staff development that you talked about, it really wouldn't do much good for us now to say that we don't have to because we already have plans for the summer and next year for our staff development. next year for our staff development.
And I was going to mention later on, because I think everybody's still deciphering the governor's act. Kind of robbing Paul. And one of the things that the legislature at least had alive was the ability to do that. And I'm wondering, in this case, it seems to me there was one possibility to take long-range, or long-range maintenance and move it around.
I think...
I don't know if that's true or not.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, Director Potacek, it was, it was move, taking that money and putting it towards some of the security things that you might need. But you are spot on that if we did that, that would be wonderful and would help us with some of the security pieces. But then the other things that you had planned, whether it's handicapped accessibility or parking or roofs, and that doesn't get done. So, Director Hepner and both of you are spot on. When you look at that, it seems like it might be helping, but it really isn't helping your budget and the work that you need to do.
Well, and I agree with that. And I went to see this morning and listen to Tom Melcher, who's many of you know, is pretty much a financial expert. And he went through a lot of this. But I'm saying, it's still at the decipher stage. And now, where it's relevant to tonight is we're going to be asked to vote for the flooring.
Well, I guess it's part of the, it's part of the plan that's been, you know, it's not new money. It's part of the plan that we put out there for, you know, when you approve this, I don't know the last time actually, the date on that we approved it was part of that initial plan.
July.
Last July.
So, it was part of that initial with all of the line items.
Yeah. Yep. It was.
All right. Any other ones? Great. Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the district-wide flooring replacement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hands. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And the next one was the model plan for lead in school drinking water. Director Stivlin?
Yeah, so in our conversations we had earlier today, we kind of clarified that this, this may be something that we'll talk about in, a little bit more in-depth at a later date, maybe perhaps later this summer. But I, I know that this was something that was on a lot of people's minds a couple of years ago. The potential hazard of having lead in our water. A lot of schools, you know, came under fire for not doing enough to keep track of that and really monitoring it. And so, I felt it was important for us to bring this out and talk about it a little bit because I felt it was an opportunity for us to reassure people that, you know, a lot has been done. And as a matter of fact, there is a new statute as of last year that requires school districts to, to approve either this model plan that has been put together by the state of Minnesota and the Department of Education and the Department of Health. And it's a phenomenal plan, by the way. It's really, really lovely. I love the way it's laid out. It's very easy to read and very comprehensive. But yet, either we're supposed to take that plan or we're supposed to make our own that would be equal, as equal to that plan or more stringent perhaps. So, that we are required to follow this plan. We have to monitor the water every five years. I see Tony nodding, so tell me if I'm saying something wrong here. So far, so good, I guess. And then one other component is that we have to communicate the results of that plan and make everyone know that those, where that information can be found. So, I think that's great. That's very reassuring. And I guess, from what I understand, we will be doing some testing on our water this summer. And then after that point, we will have a report on what the results were and then a little bit more about this plan. But just wanting to point out to people, I believe this, this model plan is available on the website, like MDE website. And of course, it's in our, it's on the agenda for tonight. So, if somebody wanted to go looking for it, it's, it's here. But it's really good, good reading if you're, if you're interested in that sort of thing.
Director Pelletier?
I have a question possibly for Mr. Wilder. And I, this is out of the box, so I apologize if you're not, I don't know. I'm wondering about what's going on in Lake Elmo. And I just, and I've heard from, not, not related to lead, but I, I was just, I just was talking with some teachers and they said they're concerned about the school or something. And they're, do you know what's going on with that at all?
I have not been told. Don't.
There's a, there's an issue in Lake Elmo right now, apparently. And I mean, this is like 24 hours old. So, I just, I was wondering if you knew about that at all?
I haven't. I have not heard.
Okay. I've not heard either.
Yeah. And it does... Now, everyone knows.
Working for a chamber in Lake Elmo?
No, everyone's going to...
I mean, it does talk about that in the plan too. That's one of the things that's interesting about it is that every district is different because every community is different. And everybody's water has different issues, right? Depending on where you live and what the ground is like underneath you. So, what works here might not work somewhere else. And so, that's why they're giving us flexibility to, to connect with the community partners and really pay attention to these things and stay on top of it and really communicate that out to the public, so.
And again, I just think it's more valuable to, at, when we do have results and kind of know real facts instead of talk about what ifs and all that, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, Director Potacek?
Mr. Wilder?
Yep.
It talks about, it talks about tests were taken at Afton Lakeland Anderson, Lake Elmo. Will we, like, work with you?
Yes.
It was like May 4th and 8th.
Yep. And I expect the results next week.
That's...
Yeah. And then again, back to, we wanted to, because this was, this plan was created so late in the, in the schedule, a lot of agencies are just booked solid with testing and everything. So, it's kind of a short timeline. So, we got these on the books or tested, and then the rest of the schools will be tested when school starts up again.
And I share my colleagues, I think the model plan is excellent. Will those typically then published on the website?
They will be, yes. Yeah.
Because I think there are an awful lot of people who are concerned about this issue.
Yes. Yes.
I think the statute requires that they be published so the public can be aware of it, so.
Correct. Yep. And we'll, when we do take the test and have the results, we'll send out information to the parents at the school and on an annual basis.
Yeah. And I want to thank Director Stivlin. I, I think it is important that we have a, a community conversation at a board meeting on that. I think the other thing that may want to discuss, and I've, I've heard from some people, is Channel 11 did a, a story that all schools are supposed to test for radon as well. And so, you might want to just add that to the discussion as well as to where the, where the district is at with doing that as well. So, with that, could I have a motion to approve on the consent agenda G model plan for lead in school drinking water?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right.
I think it's more appropriate, sir, second.
Whatever.
Let's arm wrestle. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. Opposed? All right. We have no reports tonight. We have one action item. This is the Read Well by Third Grade Plan. Ms. Lateral had presented at a report at our last board meeting. And so, this is basically the action item to adopt that. So, I'll turn it over to Karen. And it may be short. If anyone has questions, this would be the time to ask her. I would note that we did receive from a community member questions that they had regarding this Read Well by Third Grade Plan. I thank you for turning around a response. We got that late, or early this morning. And so, I'm sure that that was communicated to those people, so thank you for doing that. And so, I'll turn it over to you if you have anything else to add.
Well, Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli, and members of the board, good evening on this beautiful evening. I'm really happy to be here in the air conditioning. As you mentioned, I'm here tonight to seek approval for our Read Well by Third Grade Plan for the 18-19 school year. And I reported on that two weeks ago. And so, at this time, if there are any final questions that you'd like to address, I'm here to answer them.
All right. Any questions for Karen or Rachel's here as well? So, Director Pearson?
I just have, maybe question, maybe just a comment. I missed the last meeting, but I did listen to the whole thing and appreciate all the time that you took and all the questions you answered. And I do appreciate too, I'm looking at page 12 where it talks about communication of classroom progress. And I brought this up last year. And I see that you've changed the wording to maybe more accurately reflect what's happening, which I appreciate that. And this is, doesn't really pertain to the report, but as I've been reflecting, five more days with an elementary student and just where I feel like I could have done more if we had received more communication about what specifically was happening in the areas of reading and really everything they're doing that I could support at home. I'm not sure if that's something that comes up in conversations around this or in other areas. But I know if I knew, when I volunteer, I can reinforce because I've been in the classroom. I know what they're talking about. But otherwise, I feel like I could help my kids, but I don't know what's really happening. So, just a comment, really.
Well, and I'd like to respond to that in a positive way. I agree that there's always room for improvement. And I would say this is maybe one area that we are continuing to look at. Our team is building a website with a variety of information for teachers, parents, people outside of the district who might be interested, board members, community members. And the alignment that we're bringing in with the, with the new curriculum plan, one, that will be a tremendous support for parents because everybody will be moving in essentially the same direction. It's not lockstep. It's, it's individualized, but it's the same plan moving in the same direction. And they'll also have availability with support on the district page as well with more information. And we'd like to spend more time working on that this summer when we have just a teensy bit more free time on our hands to get that fleshed out and loaded onto the, the district webpage.
Thank you. And just to be clear, I'm not saying anything bad about what's...
No, I'm a parent.
It just would help. I know, and I know there's other parents that would love to support the staff, but don't always know what to do. But if we know, then we...
And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Director Hepner?
Just one thing on the philosophy and beliefs at the end in the appendices. You've got a statement to kind of hook on to what Shelley said. All students should be supported at school and at home to develop a lifelong love of reading and learning. And to me, I, I know that's not in the beginning under our goals, but as a former English teacher, I guess I'm going to say, if, if we work to develop a lifelong love of reading and learning, we're kind of doing our job as a district. And we hope that's where our kids end up. So, I think that's a great statement. I don't, I don't know where you'd put it to...
You'd like to see it at the front?
Well, I'd like to see it, yeah, when you walk in our building over there. But I just think that's a great statement to make. The more often we can say that to kids and to their parents, I think that lifelong love of reading and learning is what we're all about. So, thanks for including that in there.
Director Potacek?
Karen, I went through the report. And I liked the report. And one of the things I think that you did very intentional was to include more references to dyslexia. And this morning, as I mentioned, I present the schools for equity and education. And two of their speak... Very connected dyslexia. Both of them, first names were Rachel. And one was the state president of the Minnesota Association. The other one was on the board, but she was also a school board member in Delaware.
Okay.
I thought one of the things she talked about that was interesting, because as a board member, one of the sensitivities we have is fiduciary. And she had two children who suffer from dyslexia. And she talked about her child, who now is a third grader, and they really didn't catch on that he had those problems till he was a third grader. And they, neither do... And what she talked about is that her younger daughter is in kindergarten and she's facing the same things. But what it allowed them to do is to treat it earlier. And the financial connection is, she is saving the district a ton of money because if it's unattended, many times, not always, those students end up in special education, which is extremely more costly. So, there's a, there's a certain amount in, in the plan where when you diagnose, or diagnose is really the wrong word, when you identify those weaknesses, if you deal with them earlier enough, that's the right thing to do. But also, it's in our financial interest to also... So, again, I think this year we've made some steps to better treating kids who suffer from that. And apparently, it's a big percentage. We recorded numbers again, 17, 15 percent. And so, the productivity that those kids can have later in their life is so important if we capture it earlier or identify it.
Thank you. And I'd also say it ties into mental health. If children feel successful, then they'll be more apt to be, it feeds itself. The success feeds itself. And I'm pleased to say that every year, we never stop improving things. We always know there's more to do. And it's, it's exciting work. As you mentioned, with the fiduciary responsibility, one of our funding sources for our elementary interventionists is through the state of Minnesota. It's actually special education funding that's intentional to intervene with students and keep them from needing to go into special education. And a large portion of our elementary interventionists are funded through that program, through the state of Minnesota and the special education funding. So, that's very much at the top of our radar. In fact, I've been traveling around the district this week and next, talking to buildings about their end of year results, their special ed referral rates, how many of the students originated out of our Read With Me program, what kind of goals can we set for next year, how can we better improve our program? And so, it's not just at the district level that we're looking at the programs to see what can we do better. We're also talking to the teachers and the parents, seeking parent feedback, seeking student feedback, and really trying to find out how can we be the best that we can be? Because I think all of us here would like to be as successful as possible.
I really liked that last part, finding out and be part of it with the parents. So, thank you.
Many hands make light work, right?
Director Lockland?
I just had an offering if, I think it's on page 12, about the parent notification involvement. If, if there's any willingness just to consider maybe parent guardian or...
Oh, I know that's very, very easily changed.
But, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing it out. Director Pelletier?
Yeah, you know, I, I think I brought this up at a previous meeting, but I, as a, as a mom of one of my children was, could have been diagnosed and wasn't, it was, it's a, it's a very, very sensitive and serious topic for many families. And I just want to make sure, I, I want to thank you for, this has been quite a journey and there, there has been a lot of conversation back and forth and a lot of concern from families. And like I said to a mom recently, you know, every issue that comes to us is the most important issue to that person. And we all need to remember that and be cognizant of that. So, I, I want to thank you and I, I'm, I'm happy to hear that a little bit and hear about just the, you know, that, that we're going to be looking at this and, and monitoring it. It's not, that, it's always been something important to me that we're going to adopt this plan and then that's it. It's, you know, let's just go. So, I just want to thank you and keep up the good work and the communication and engagement with families. Thanks, you guys. Thank you.
Anyone else? Director Stivlin?
Hi, I just have a comment. I, yeah, I mean, I applaud you. This has been a difficult journey this year. We've had a lot of conversation. And of course, you know, as we all know, the dyslexia piece has been a very, very big part of that conversation. And I, I was curious because this, this Read Well by Third Grade piece is part of our World's Best Workforce Reporting Component. So, we can go to other district school websites and find their World's Best Workforce scores and compare them. And so, I did that for about 10, 12 different districts in the Twin Cities areas. And our score is actually fairly high compared for, for third, Read Well by Third Grade. I think we're at about 68 percent or something like that, which certainly room for improvement.
Definitely.
But it actually was higher than quite a few of the districts I looked at. In fact, I think I only found two that were higher. And both of them were in the 80 percentile. And both of them had very specific, very laid out, clearly defined dyslexia programs. And both fairly recent, I think. So, I think that's interesting. And both fairly recent, I think. So I think that's interesting. And I think that one of the things I learned, which I did not know before about the dyslexia piece is that it somewhere estimated that like 15 to 20 percent of the population could potentially have dyslexia. So if we have 30 percent kids that aren't reading at grade level by third grade, how many of them might be dyslexic and we don't know it? And we still don't know it even in third grade. So I feel like this is just my comment for as we go forward in the name of, you know, ways to think about how to improve. I think that might be the place where we really need to focus. And one of the things that I have a concern about this plan so far is that, number one, we don't have a clear sense of what the professional development is going to look like. And I really hope that it has a high focus on dyslexia, or at least that there's an opportunity for teachers to learn more about that and what it looks like and what kids need if they have it. And then the other piece is just that the whole MTSS process, I love it. I think it's a great concept. It's very common sense. But for us, it isn't really clearly defined. It seems like in this plan, we still don't know who does what and when, which kids are going to be, it seems like it's just, it comes across in the report is a little bit muddy to me.
Okay.
And I think that's just because it's still evolving. It's still being, it's in process. And I think that's fine. But those are the two pieces that I just really hope that next year, when we're back here again talking about this, I really hope that we have some more answers to those questions. But otherwise, I feel really good about this and I, and I hope that the program does really well. The new, the new literacy program does really well.
Thank you, Director Stivlin. If you would be willing, I would very much appreciate concrete feedback on that section in areas where you feel that there could be additional clarification.
Okay.
And I know that our director of personalized learning is working on solidifying the behind the scenes process with MTSS.
Okay.
And that will feed into it as well.
I'd be happy to.
But I would really love to hear specific ideas where I can improve on that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, could I have a motion to approve the Read Well Plan as set forth in the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the Read Well Plan as presented, signify by saying aye raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful summer.
You as well. All right. That brings us down to board member reports. I will start. I too had the honor and privilege of attending the end of year functions that go along with upcoming summer and graduation. I happened to sit in the audience during the scholarship award ceremony and this is, was the seventh one that I was able to attend. And it gets bigger and the kids become more impressive. I really enjoy hearing where they're off to. And you can tell even sitting in the audience that the people who donate these resources to these people really truly love what they're doing. And these kids are very appreciative of receiving these benefits. Sometimes people have said, well, it's only X amount of dollars. Well, you know, in reality, X is better than zero. And for a lot of these organizations, it's, it's not the dollar amount. It's their willingness to contribute to not only our district, but to help kids achieve, whether it's college, whether it's a two-year program, whether it's a Vo-Tec, all of that was on display at that award ceremony. The other thing that I attended was the retirement dinner. Again, I think it was Superintendent Pontrelli at that dinner. You gave us a number of the years of experience that were in that room. 558 years of experience that was retiring from our district. And, you know, that, that also is just an amazing, amazing thing. I mean, there, there were people who are retiring who actually, you know, went through our school district, worked for our school district and have given so much. So that, that was also an awesome experience. We also had a World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee. I want to thank those on that committee, Director Pelletier, Director Pearson, and Director Patachek. I thought it was a great kickoff. Many of the board members were there. There's a lot of energy in that room. And I think the district is going to be well-served by those people who are on that committee as well as the, the community as a whole for what these people are going to be asked to do. And I'll look forward to, to watching that grow as it goes forward. And then finally, I don't know if some of you received an email from Bev Petrie, but she was following up from an email that we received from Everett Crowell. Everett is a junior at the high school. And Everett was one of the recipients of attending the science fair. I think he took first place in the state and then he went on to the national. And he placed first in the national in biomedical engineering. And he is now off to the international science and engineering fair. And I had the pleasure of coaching Everett in softball or in T-ball and baseball. And I can tell you, he's a phenomenal kid. And I know that I'm wishing him well. And I think we as a whole will look forward to hearing how that came out. And then the other thing, I had sent an email to the board regarding whether or not the board was interested in getting together in a closed session to discuss board relations, to strengthen board communication and those kind of things. And I just wanted, as I indicated in my email, I was going to ask tonight if members of the board wanted to do that. I also sent an advisory opinion which indicated that it is legal to close a meeting for that purpose. We would need to retain a facilitator. I did also say that I don't think it would be worthwhile if there was not 100% commitment to wanting to do that. So I wanted to ask tonight if anyone is not interested in, in doing that. If everyone isn't interested, I would get some dates from all of you and look at retaining a facilitator to help us in those discussions. So I, I think what I'll do is I'll just indicate, is anyone not interested in having a meeting like that? Okay.
Well, I guess I was kind of asking, I don't really understand what your, what the purpose is. And I think that trying to do something in a closed session is really, it's difficult. Like, it's not something we should be doing lightly.
Well, I, I don't think anyone is taking it lightly. I think that it is legal according to the people that, that monitor that. But it, it, it sounds like there isn't 100% willingness to do that. So it's really not worth even discussing it even further. So that concludes my report. So I'll turn it over to the next is board member reports. And we'll start at Director Stivlin.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just before you move on. I was hoping, and maybe you can just let us know when, I was hoping we'd get a little bit of an update on your timeline on when we're going to be losing you and what your plan is.
Sure. Right now, it looks like my last board meeting will be June 21st. So that's kind of where we're at, but things are always subject to change.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and are we working on a process for replacing you? Or do we have any thoughts about that? Or are we going to discuss that at some point?
Yeah, I think, well, obviously you'll discuss it. I think the, the conversations that I've had with legal counsel and with Superintendent Pontrelli is that when we get closer to that date, there'll probably be a meeting set up to discuss what that process will be. As I think I indicated, there is a statutory process. The six of you will have to come up with a name. The six of you will have to agree to that person by majority. And then once that person is identified, the community has the option by petition to see if they object to that. There's a number of signatures that would be required. I believe it's 5% of the last election. If that is not obtained, then that person would be seated to fill my spot till the next election. And my term is up as of December. And so I think the, the next steps will be, once I'm resigned, that you will decide how you want to interview people, how you want to vet people, those kind of questions, and then set up your own timeline. So. Sure.
And Chair Lam?
Yeah.
Is... I think I have a copy of the district policy that's on that. So you talked about six would have to come up with a nominee, so to speak, and then-
Right.
-carry a majority-
Yep.
-of that. Is that process, is it spelled out to whether people apply or it strictly all comes from board members?
Well, I think that, that's when I say, you know, that you guys are going to have to come up with your own process on like that. There's the requirements, but I think you six will have to decide how you want to, what your timeline is to have people who want to decide to do it, what you'll ask them in interview questions, those kind of things to try to figure out who you would like, because it requires a majority. So.
And we have, you might want to consider then a learning session sometime in June before that date to just do exactly what Chair Lammon had laid out. And then we have also gathered from other districts who've gone through this process, a list of sample questions. You might want to do an application process similar like you did for the World's Best Workforce. You might want to sit down and look at those applications and then from there, go through the process. So we've been collecting information from other districts who've gone through the process.
What I would suggest, it just so happened that I was at AMSD after Tom's announcement came in. And I was talking to Scott Krumquist about this. And Scott said that they have gone through, at least in one district, this process of where it was done. They've never gone through that he was aware of a process of the 5% wherever that came to be an issue. Tom, do you know offhand? I don't. And I don't know the math of it.
It would be about 3,000 people.
No, I wasn't that one. The question I was going to ask is how much time is left after the 21st? What are we looking at, about four, five months, six months?
For, well-
Six months.
The statute, if you look, it had, you look at the election date and then 90 days prior to that. So, since the decision was made before August 8th, we need to go through that process. If you go through the process and, and for some reason it doesn't work out, then you can go through it again. Or our, our legal counsel said at that point, if you've already had an election, then you might just defer to the elected officials at that time.
Okay. Yeah, and with-
We went through this in 2007. Cause at that time, I applied Scott Papke, Natalie. There were about, I think we had six or eight. No, she didn't, I don't think she applied. But there were six or eight people who applied and we came and sat before the board and answered their questions. And then they kind of eventually picked Scott Papke to, to take it. So it, it's not new to Stillwater. There's probably something in our history that tells exactly the steps that we went through.
Yeah, I think the only thing that's really changed is that statutorily, they added that requirement that the community could weigh in, so to speak, by petition on the person. So that person isn't seated till after, and I'm not sure what the timeframe is in order to collect those names, whether or not they do that.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Well, if you do narrow the process down to the one person, they would be appointed by resolution at a board meeting. Thirty days after that meeting is when the petition would then, within that 30 days, need to be filed with the clerk of the board. If a petition's received, you would go back through the process perhaps, like Denise was saying. If a petition is not received, that person then would take the oath and be seated at the following board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, no worries. Always important to know what next steps are. So, all right. So moving on to board member reports, I'll start with Director Stivlin.
I don't have anything.
All right. Director Hapner?
Emid report is in your packet tonight. And I just want to point out one thing. WMAP, who's the West Side Emid, if you will, voted to dissolve their joint powers organization effective June 30th, 2018. Our executive director, Gene Loopkey, reached out to the WMAP districts who are Eden Prairie, Robinsdale, St. Louis Park, Minneapolis, Wayzetta, and St. Anthony, New Brighton, to encourage partnering opportunities with those districts. They may be interested in some of our professional development. So it's unfortunate that they chose to disband, but it may open up some opportunities for Emid. And then the rest of the notes from our May meeting are available to you. Just a reminder to board members, special ed graduations tomorrow afternoon, 1 o'clock at the high school auditorium. And I saw something, and maybe the rest of you did also, in, in MSBA board briefs today, Burnsville did kind of a neat thing. And I don't even know who I'd mentioned this to, but they had a signing day for people who are going into education. And what they wanted to do was kind of make a big deal out of people who are considering education as a career. You know, we have signing days for athletes and we have a broad college signing day, but they wanted to have something separate for those who are considering teaching. And I thought it was a good idea and I'll probably mention it to Rob Bachter or somebody up there. But I, I think it's a good way to kind of give additional respect to teaching as a career. And if you get a chance, look at your MSBA board briefs. It's in there under Burnsville Signing Day, I think is what they mentioned.
Thank you. Director Pearson?
Just a note, I love that idea. And I also heard some feedback from students who maybe we want to think about having signing days for specific trades or a military. So they feel like, because I think traditionally is very much four-year college, but I think it'd be fun to have that specifically for students that are choosing a different path. I just wanted to note, we talked about the scholarship night, but I spoke to several of the benefactors behind the stage before. And the, I'm so struck, especially by those who give after tragedy, who've lost a child or lost their parents and want to give back to the community. It's so impactful. And I hope the students recognize that, but I recognize it. And you could feel it in the room, how meaningful it was to those benefactors. So thank you to them. I attended Buck Laureate last night at the high school, which was great. And then on Wednesday, I attended a fifth grade track meet at the high school. This was a new thing this year. Usually at preschool just has their field day, but this year they brought all the fifth graders from the district together at the high school. And it was very official, like-
That's great.
They had the announcements, they had the people standing on deck for their races. They had the concession stand open, which the kids were thrilled about. And it was a really great day. And like, I mean, the kids had a great time and they all, every school had their T-shirt. And, and so big shout out to our gym teachers for being willing to take that on. It was really fun.
Thank you very much. Director Pelletier?
All right. Just, you know, piggyback on the comments about the scholarship award ceremony, the benefactors that, you know, it's, it's amazing seeing these fabulous kids of ours. But was so much equally amazing was the pride that these benefactors had in their eyes. And they were so, they were so thankful to be able to give back. And I just, I, I can't even begin to say enough of thanks to these people and their dedication to this district. And there are so many of them. I mean, to the point where it's 700, upwards of $700,000. It just can't, it can't go unnoticed. What a wonderful gift we have in this district. And the other, let's see here, we have AMSD is tomorrow. The community, that's the working group reports. The, I also had a great pleasure this morning of attending a groundbreaking ceremony for Anderson Windows as they, they're embarking on a major expansion, expansion project on the north section of the facility. And I, I bring this up because for one thing, Anderson has been in existence for, as many know, 115 years, been in Bayport for 105 years. Just a wonderful asset to this community. And they're taking grandiose steps in the environment and protecting the environment. And that's why I was there. I'm on a advisory committee in that regard. And this will produce over 40 jobs in this community. So it's nothing but good stuff there. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Lachlan?
So I see Dr. Hill in there in the audience. I just want to say to our teachers and our staff who are, are watching that, thank you for, for, as the year comes to a close, as many of our students are really looking forward to the summer, we know to- We know too that there's a contingent of our students for whom school is their safe place and summers are not always as eagerly anticipated for every student. And so thank you for the teachers who are navigating that and just really taking extra care and attention of our students as they prepare for the summer.
Thank you. Director Patachek?
Legislatively, as a biggie. First of all, what I want to remind board members, if you're interested, the Minnesota School Board Association is having a meeting tomorrow at 12 to 1 o'clock. Let's go online. I did that. It takes about a minute. All they want is your name and your email address. Just search for that. Along those same lines this morning, as I mentioned, I attended the C meeting and it was all about, a good portion of it was all about the governor's action and the legislative action. As most of you, I'm still sort of deciphering, I think I sent all of you a link to if you wanted to watch the press conferences for the leader of the House, the leader of the Senate, and the governor, and they could all give you their take on what transpired and why. It was interesting because from my own personal perspective, this represented to me, the closest you could come to a shutdown with nothing to shut down. Again, there are some important bills that I hope still make and I hope the pension bill makes it. It's one of your fondest bills. It's very important. I hope that makes it. But a week ago, I would have been much more optimistic in what I would have predicted. But unfortunately, it's an election year. The state legislature and the governor, politically, they seem to be so polarized at this point. And even the bills that came in, it's hard not to look at any of the three branches and look at what they proposed and find good things. Unfortunately, there's distasteful things for the others and I'm not sure there's fault with any one body except that it seemed like they were posturing more than trying to reach an agreement. And like I say, unfortunately, I think that's going to hurt kids. Tom Melcher put out, Tom, again as a guru, a PowerPoint. I will give this to Barb and it goes through a lot of the bills, although in some ways this reminds me of an autopsy because they'll have the bill what was proposed and then they'll say governor vetoed or vice versa. So you may want to look at that. There's an awful lot of stuff in there. One of the governor's main objections, and I'm trying to be objective on this, is that even in the finance bills, half of them were policies. And he wasn't saying that they didn't have a right to do that, but you can't pin them so much in there that you got to take the good with the bad or whatever. And that came up in the last session and it seems to have gotten worse in this session. And so it's going to be an interesting year, but at this point, there's a fair amount of just stagnation that in the end I think is hurting schools and hurting kids and, but I'll leave it up to viewers, I'll leave it up to board members to look at the papers, look at online. There's a lot of information out there, but it's almost, there's so much information that it's hard to sort through it and say who's right, who's wrong, and what really filters when all is said and done.
Any other board working group reports? Director Hupner?
Do we have a working group report? This is the, these are the 200s. And as everybody gets them, I'll just point out a couple. If you look at the front page...
Oh, my gosh. I don't look at this.
If you look at the front page, this is Barb, this is our, we wouldn't put together something this nice.
Wow. We have Barb on our committee. Barb is the dream.
The guts of this
Yeah, we are the dream team now.
Took a lot of time. But what we're doing tonight is giving you the recommended drafts. What we hope to have happen between now and the 31st, when we next meet, is that you'll go through the draft and if you have changes, questions, concerns, get ahold of any policy working group member, that's Sarah, myself, Paula. I guess as we talked about it, the idea was not that you change this to that, but that there are substantive ideas in here that you may like or not like. There may be things that you want to change that we didn't change. Those are the things that we're looking for, not so much, you've got a better word than the word that we're using. I seriously would like to say this is 80% complete. We've spent a lot of hours on it. We will get together on the 31st then and take a look at your changes, questions, concerns. And we hope to then send it out again on the 1st. I have a first reading on the 7th and we are not going to read all the policies at the first reading. We are not going to read the policies at the second reading. That's your homework. You do the reading and get that done so we aren't spending our board time reading this stuff, which you can do by yourself. Just a second. And then after the first and second reading, we will approve the 200s at the July 12th meeting. And if Sarah or Paula have anything to say?
Yeah, I was just going to say in regards to the reading, the reading the actual policies at a board meeting, I don't know, I wasn't here when that happened, but I think the idea is that we want to make sure that the public is aware of what's being put in the new policies. And I think that's great, but just to want to reiterate, these will be available, you know, in the regular meeting agenda so that those of you out in the public that want to see it and read along with us as we're discussing these, I encourage you to do that because we will not read them, we will not read them in the meeting.
We have, there's red and blue in there. Red are the attorneys' suggested changes and the blue are what our committee
Okay, oh, good. That was my question.
Put in there. So when you see reds and blues, that's what they are.
And the line through is striking
Yes.
From previous policy.
Yes.
All right.
Paula, do you have anything?
Uh-uh. All right, any other board
Question, just before we leave that. So everything that's in here, that's in the red, our legals are saying is okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other board working group reports?
I just have a quick one. The Community Engagement Work Group will be meeting tomorrow and I'll have a report at the next meeting.
All right.
And you'll have one of these.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I will.
Any other board working groups? Director Stivland?
I will just say one comment. I did enjoy being at the World's Best Workforce meeting. I appreciate all the work that went into creating that awesome, now that's the dream team right there, right?
Could not agree more.
Completely impressive. I'm super excited to see what they bring to us. I'm excited for the work that is ahead and where they take us.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be great.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah.
Anything else? Director Lachlan?
Yeah, so as we know that we have a finance meeting coming up on Tuesday, May 29th, at 6 o'clock. I believe that will be at Central Services. And just wanted to acknowledge, I did receive some feedback to the email that I had sent out and I think just in the spirit of what Director Stivland was saying about questions ahead of time, is by no means to suggest that you can't have questions that evening, but for the sake of having the most comprehensive, robust discussion that we can, that when we do vote on the budget, that any clarifying questions that you can have ahead of time is most useful, so.
Great. Anything other board working group reports? All right, before we adjourn, I also want to follow up with Director Lachlan. This is our last board meeting before the end of school and I want to thank the students, teachers, and staff. If you recall, this was the transition year and we did a lot of movement and we could not do it without all of everyone's help and support from administration all the way down to teachers, staff, custodial people. And so, thank you. This was a very challenging year. We got through it. I think all our kids are better off for what we've done here. I wish you all nothing but a safe, healthy, and relaxing summer. So with that, we will adjourn to a closed session to discuss property identified as Marine Elementary School pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, subdivision 3, to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the purchase or sale of real or personal property. So are we going upstairs then?
We are.
Okay, so we will adjourn to...
We need a motion.
Oh, could I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, signal by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we will adjourn to the third floor.